Let's start the meeting. So I'd like to let everybody know that there is a sign up sheet for comments on the back table, and we're encouraging anybody who hasn't had the opportunity to offer a comment either by sending a note or a letter into the Select Board over the last couple of weeks, or if you were here at the last meeting and had a chance to express your opinions, please defer to those that haven't had a chance yet. And then we'll go by that list of people that signed up. We're going to limit the comments, and it's going to be comments only. I don't really want any back and forth discussion. The Select Board will just listen to your comments, and then we'll have a discussion amongst ourselves and make our decision on the letter of support. So if you'd like to offer a comment tonight and haven't had a chance to, please sign up. If you have a burning desire, having already made comments, to make another comment tonight, please sign up. Only people that have signed up will be -- I'm going to be calling off the names. And you'll have one minute. One minute. Each person will have one minute to comment.
No.
Figure pardon? No, because we did it. We spent an hour at the last meeting doing that, and we have a lot of other things on the agenda. So we're basically -- and we had asked people since the last meeting to send comments to the Select Board. We've received almost 70 comments.
Seventy. Seventy-three. Seventy-three, come on.
So I think people have had a chance to say their say, and you know, we -- I just don't want to kind of rehash the same things that we talked about last time. That's not true.
That is true.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. Figure pardon? What do you mean?
It's your three elected representatives.
Three is an odd number, so with a plurality... We'll all vote. There'll be three votes, okay? One, two, three, and whatever number is the highest.
I understand that, but there's only three of you.
Two against one.
There's no tie. Where's the tie, Mary? If there were four people or just two people, then there is a possibility of a tie, but not with three.
It seems unequal that there's only three select board members.
Well, Mary, that's all there ever has been.
I thought Brian Chapman was still on the Select Board.
No, Brian is not still on the Select Board.
That's why Chris Doby was.
Sorry?
Yes.
He's Brian. He's a new Brian.
Yes. Mary, Chris was elected at the last town meeting day.
We only elected three select board members?
We only elected one. The two -- Paul and I are -- have our terms still to finish out. Okay? So again, we need -- the Select Board needs to limit the amount of time that we spend discussing this tonight. You know, we gave an hour and a half of our time in a Select Board meeting last time, and people have had the opportunity to send in comments. So I have it scheduled to start at 6:25, and I have it scheduled to end the discussion part, giving the Select Board at least 10 minutes to discuss it amongst themselves in front of everybody. So it'll be my call when we get close to, let's say, 20 of seven. I'm going to end the discussion. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And I would defer and allow the first -- you know, the people that have signed up, I would defer to them to speak first, and if there's more time than other people, they're welcome to offer comments. And I would prefer that it's just comments only, that we don't kind of get into the back and forth discussion that we had last time, which last time, that was great, but it's time to make a decision on this and move on. So first thing is adjustments to the Select Board agenda, and there will be no Town Treasurer Report tonight. And then we have received -- the Select Board has received a contract from Brookfield Services for the year 2022, and they're the company that oversees and maintains our emergency generator at the school. And then there's also -- Robin has received a letter from the Winouski Basin Water Quality Council. They're looking for municipal representatives, and we'll just briefly discuss whether we can think of anybody that might be qualified for that. We have no bills to look at or to approve tonight, so that part of the agenda won't happen. We do have some minutes. And do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the November 8, 2021 Select Board meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So next on the agenda is the Town Clerk's Report. Yes, I did. Thank you, Monty. Is there any public comment outside of the Woodbury Mountain Wilderness Preserve? Yes, Monty?
Last week at the county man meeting, the subject came up of drug issue in Woodbury.
Yes.
And one of the big drug issues in Woodbury is the house office and first office in Southwood. And I found this past week that that individual has not paid taxes in that place for four years. I understand that that's the only taxpayer, the liquid taxpayer's job to regulate, whether they go for two years, three years, four years, whether they make a monthly payment, whether the house goes up for auction or for tax. I understand that. I would think that the problem we have is now the drugs. The Select Board would want to work with the only taxpayer, the liquid tax collector. And maybe look at their avenues of ways they could slow down the drug implementation. It is now. Yeah, they never stop it, but maybe if you slow down, 911 is not working. So maybe the Select Board needs to broaden their horizon and look at what happened outside the house.
Okay, thank you, Monty. Any other public comments? Okay.
Yeah, we worked with the liquid taxpayers. There is always a negotiation open. It's not like you let the slot.
Are you speaking as a lister, Mary?
Say again, as a lister, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. Any other public comment at all? So Robin, Town Clerk's Report?
As of today, we have received one job application for the road committee. I know they're not due until the 25th. We received one. And Brandy and I have started to put together the stuff for the budget for the town report. We started that last week. And other than that, the recording. We're still getting them on a pretty regular basis. That's that.
Yeah, okay. Have we received any more auditor bids?
She was talking about the ones from Maine, where they want to do everything electronically. So I don't know how far that has gotten to.
Okay, all right. So we'll just wait until Brandy can talk about that with us. Okay. All right. So it's 6:10, and the Woodbury Mountain Wilderness Preserve is the next item on the agenda, so we've got a little extra time. Is there -- could somebody -- I guess I'll go and get it, the comment sign up sheet. So there are a number of people that I know haven't made comments, so I'm going to call on the people that I know haven't, and then we'll work on the list. There are six people that have signed up so far. So Steve Freihoffner, would you like to offer a comment? You have one minute. Actually, I guess I can't limit your time, but please be aware of your time.
I'll be brief. What I wanted to talk about here was the basis for the Board's decision on this. See this as a pitch for property rights if you want, but what I really wanted to say is that I think the Board has to settle on why it's going to make the decision. It has to be, I think, an objective decision, not based on personal preferences. If it's an objective decision, I think as long as the project is consistent with zoning ordinance, with the town plan, and doesn't interfere with anybody else's property, then the Board should prove it. That's basically what I have to say. As far as I've read the description of the project on the website, and having had a hand in drafting the town plan, probably one of your plans has been developed, and the zoning ordinance, I think that the prospective purchasers' design, name, and use for the property is consistent with -- it doesn't run afoul of the zoning ordinance or the town plan, and he'll have a right to do what he wants with it. I think the Select Board should weigh that carefully in making their decision. And once the Select Board does make their decision, I think we would all benefit by knowing the reasoning for the decision, either by posting a copy of the letter of support, the letter of not support, on the town website so that we can dive in. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Burrell?
Yeah. My question is if and when these people purchase this land, there's a lot of question on the Hoochiman Trail and the snowmobile trails that are incorporated inside of all this property. So after they purchase this property, and they decide to tell the town, "We want those trails brought up to Class Four status roads," and they tell the taxpayers, "You're going to spend 30 or 40 grand to bring these up to code," and they give you the alternative, you spend the taxpayers' money to bring these roads up to code or turn them to trail status. You guys are going to have to make that choice. If you turn those roads into trail status, those people will shut them down. So you might go down the road because they're going to put you guys in a corner on that. And they will do it. I've been talking to guys from the National Foundation, Furlane Preservation, and many different -- and they like -- it's in their plan.
Is it okay if I comment on the road status? Are you -- is everyone okay with that? So they are classified as Class Four roads right now, the Hoochiman Trail, and if the town were to reclassify it as a trail, it's still town-owned property, so they wouldn't have any say on what happens with that road, or the Woodbury -- you know, West Woodbury Road either. Those are -- West Woodbury Road is Class Three, then it's Class Four, and then it's rougher Class Four. It's Class Four all the way to the palace town line. So they have no say at all over what happens to those roads, even if they were designated or classified as a trail.
So you can guarantee townspeople that the snowmobile trails are going to stay there?
And it's my understanding from the hearing two weeks ago that the Wilderness Trust has no intention of stopping the snowmobile trail.
I don't honestly, from talking with these people, Mike, which I wish was here, he -- they said, "There's a lot of smoke in these guys' screen. They have a plan. They're not going to change it."
Okay, well, all right, fine.
So it's -- I know what you're saying, but they've done it many times before in many states, Class Four roads, turn them to trail.
They're legally -- there's no way they can do that, thanks, in my understanding of town.
Just remember that, and a year or two when it comes up.
Okay.
Please.
All right. So top of the list is Micam McIntyre. Did I pronounce that right?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, everyone else who signed up has spoken already, so...
Steve, I haven't -- I didn't sign up.
Oh.
I live directly across from you. I'm probably one of the best news of all you. I lived here all my life, but born in Eric Hospital, and the ninth generation Vermont, and they're going to screw us, I'm telling you. It's going to be covered. The wind towers, it's going to be something stupid. They won't let you walk on it, hunt on it, bring down. They don't want you trapping. They want you shooting a coyote. You hear all this stuff? I mean, what sense does this make? And if you don't cut the lumber, the deer are going to scatter. It's -- you don't sound like they have a very special plan here. But that's your decision, I guess, because we can't make it.
Okay. Is there anyone else who hasn't had a chance to comment at all yet who would like to before we get to the other folks that have signed up? Yes?
I think I would just ask, does the Select Board consider that coming out of, I'm sending like, you know, the council asking the Meyer family if they will be interested in putting covenants on to protect the integrity of the wildlife management practices that are statewide and science-based rather than these kind of arbitrary concepts that seem to be involved in these people's expectations? And also, you know, they could put covenants in there to protect the snowmobile trails, allow for certain reroutes if needed. You know, that can be done, and perhaps at the time of Woodbury, they decided with this letter contingent upon those types of covenants being planned, then if you wanted to hold everybody, then you would have that.
Is it okay if I comment on this comment, just offer some more information about that? So EBIHID, the Meyer family, has been actively trying to conserve that land and other holdings of theirs in Woodbury for at least 10 years that I know of. And the Woodbury Select Board, Woodbury Conservation Commission, has written letters of support for the different conservation programs that they've been mainly pursuing with the help of the Vermont Land Trust, conservation easements through the -- it's a federal program called the Forest Legacy Project or Program, and the particular name for this chunk of land is the Worcester Forest Legacy Project. A number of years ago, they were 13th out of 12 for project applications that were submitted, so they missed it by one. And over the past several years, or actually the last maybe four or five years, there have been different segments of that that the Vermont Land Trust has submitted to this Forest Legacy Program that have been awarded. Not the conservation easement itself, but they were -- I don't know what the right word is. They weren't -- they were -- it was granted that they could do this, that they would do this through the federal program, and nothing has really been finalized. There's the chunk that's under consideration now. There's a chunk in Elmore that's a part of this project. Those were judged, you know, they got the award. And then there's another chunk of land on the northern part of Woodbury that encompasses Nichols Pond, East Long Pond, over to Route 14 West. And then -- and everything has just kind of been stalled, so -- and I don't know whether they approached the Wilderness Trust or whether the Wilderness Trust approached them. But I think, and this is just speculation on my part, so I probably shouldn't even say it, but I think the Meyer family just kind of tired of waiting, but I shouldn't -- you know, I don't know that for certain. But so they have been actively working to try to get conservation easements on this property and other properties of the EBIHID holdings in Woodbury, so... Sure.
I would submit that that doesn't really speak to the question.
Okay.
Was it the Meyer family that approached the town of Woodbury and asked if they would put covenants on this property that would protect wildlife management practices and threats?
Yeah, the Meyer family didn't approach the town about that.
He asked if the town wanted to approach the Meyer family.
So I guess I can give you my read on this circumstance. We were just given this a month ago, about a month ago, and it was sort of presented as, "Do you support this grant application?" That's all we were really given. So no, we haven't, and I've heard other comments that those would all agree with you. I think they would all be things that we could and should do if we had been asked to be participating in the project. And it's one of my objections to the process, which I made at the last meeting, was why we hadn't been contacted a long time ago to be part of this process, because I just feel like we've been presented with a false choice, that it's either this, and it's the only thing that could possibly be done. And although I've read everybody's emails and heard the comments, I also wish to have the land preserved, but I guess my idea of preserving it is different than the current proposal. I'm more of a working landscape hunting that, you know... Unfortunately, it's been presented to us as a kind of a supporter-don't-support it for this grant application. It's my understanding they have $5 million of grant funding already, if I'm not misspeaking.
Four and a half.
Four and a half million.
Close enough.
From private sources, so we've just been asked to weigh in on this $1 million grant. I agree with you 100%. My view of this, because of the way it's been presented, is a no, only because I wish we had been engaged so we could have had some of these conversations, because I just feel like, you know, I don't want to be pit against the people that support it, because I also support protecting the land, but I think it could be done a whole lot better, because I think with everybody sitting here, we probably have a lot more in agreement than we have in disagreement. And that's kind of what I mean by the false choice. It's just, it's either this or that. It's this or they're building Walmart on the hill. You know, that's kind of the way it's been presented. And does that kind of help you? I mean, I feel the same way. I wish we had been asked, but we have basically tonight to say yes or no, unfortunately, so there's not a lot of opportunity for that.
Have you been told about the Russia? Why does it have to be...
Well, I guess the grant applications are due on a particular day.
There's a deadline for the grant application.
Yeah, and I just -- the whole thing is just really unfortunate, in my view, because everybody here had some great, great comments. I just wish we could have included it in something, but there's really no opportunity for that.
Will it ultimately be privately owned?
Yes.
Yes.
Even with all these grants and...
Yeah. And hence, my next objection is taxpayer-funded without a lot of taxpayer input.
How much -- how much -- what's the percentage of the grant compared to the private donations as far as the purchasing price goes?
So the price for the property is $6.5 million. $1 million will -- is what the grant is for, and the rest of the money is through private donations.
Do you guys know what the private donors are?
Uh, no. We can ask, but we don't know.
I think you had a comment over here.
Yeah, I want to say, what's the win-win for Woodbury? Have you signed this grant?
I don't think it is a win.
It's basically just a letter of support for a grant, so the...
They're going to purchase the land in...
They have already signed a purchase and sales agreement, yes.
Did you ever think of negotiating with them?
We are buying it. That was between the Meyer family...
To agree with the grant, maybe 10% for Woodbury?
Uh-huh.
Would have been nice, wouldn't it?
Isn't this the grant that comes from the state?
Vermont Housing and Conservation Board.
And that's funded by property tax transfers.
Still taxpayer money.
Well, so is current use, so is the Homestead Act.
Yeah.
You use the Homestead Act.
You can call it a grant all day long, but it's still taxpayer money.
It's funded by Woodbury.
It's still taxpayer money.
Yes.
Well, you'll have to get a closer look.
It's taxpayer money that's set aside for housing and/or conservation projects, so if the trust doesn't get this money, then some other conservation project somewhere else in Vermont will. That money is designated for projects like this. So Stephen? There's still people on the list, too, so people on the list, I will get to eventually here.
If I may, my comment that I came to make tonight impresses this conversation that's come up right now, and that is to philosophical objections, and especially to people that just oppose this project, I would say, let's not be philosophers, but strategists. So what's the objective? The objective is to maintain public access to Woodbury Mountain and to participate in management planning. So here are the facts. The Northeast Wilderness Trust has already raised four of the $6.5 million they need to purchase the property. According to their 2020 financial statements, they have nearly $15 million in assets, approximately $1.4 million in cash, nearly approximately $1.5 million in pledged assets. They were funded in 2002. They've already preserved or conserved 46 properties, including 10 in Vermont. We can all conclude that they will buy this property with or without the grant. So why support this grant? Because VHCB, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, if they are involved, the public will be guaranteed in perpetuity, at bare minimum, dispersed pedestrian access and participation in the management planning. So I would say, let's not be passive philosophers, but active strategists, and support this grant so VHCB and likewise ourselves can stay on the land and stay involved in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So Norman, go ahead, and then Micam, we'll get back to you on the list, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, there is a study that they're referring to the letter and call out the kind of thing that they would like to see in the easement that or comment is that VHCB will put those into the agreement, or they won't get the money. You know, they do work, they do that in order agreements. They're not, you know, ANRs on their board, and Fisher Wildlife is, we'll see what that hunting rights are reserved and so on. So, or they won't get the money. So I don't -- but in the letter from the Select Board, if you write a letter of support and call out the kind of thing that you think should be required, I mean, personally, I'd rather see the man say, you know, at the Washington Forest, maybe Marty has done a great job of that and so on, but nothing says it's going to stay that way. It could easily go in every direction and just look for that, because we'll be, so I think, anyhow, those are my thoughts. I think I kept it under a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Micam?
I guess I just want to say that, you know, they're asking for our support to use tax dollars to purchase this land, and I really didn't feel -- I kind of came slightly opposed to it, and then I heard some good comments at the last meeting, and I was kind of left here pretty much ready to change my mind and support it. I was kind of, you know, well, there are two eagles. Some lumberers can come along on it, you know, and they'll do a lot of good preparations, some stuff, I think's a little more important. But I didn't feel like they were honest with us. Like, so regardless of how you feel about what they say they want to do... Like, so regardless of how you feel about what they say they want to do, I'm not sure it really matters, because, you know, they said, I'll quote the Wildlands Partnership Coordinator from that organization, Northeast Wilderness Trust doesn't deny anyone hunting permission. When asked directly if she could explain what the purpose of the registration permit system was, she said, it's for keeping in touch and building community. But they seem to be bending over backwards to ignore the fact, or to not say that they have a lengthy list of regulations for hunting that go well above what the state requirements are. Like, they were, really, you can't go back and watch the video of that meeting and then look at their set of published rules and say that they were being honestly forthright to us. And they're asking for our support, they should be honest. Even, you know, one of the select board members said, oh, we haven't decided on any rules yet, in reference to hunting. But, hey, we don't get to decide, they get to decide. They said that they can change those rules from what they said they, said they are, whatever they want. And, um, you know, sorry, um, they have decided on those. So there was, you know, a certain amount of, seems like misinformation or disinformation at the last meeting. So I think, you know, summing it up, I could say a lot more, that I wish we had more time to discuss this, to find out more about what the rules are in terms of how they can change, you know, what restrictions there are, you know, forever on this land, or whether they can just change the wind blows. And if we do have to go ahead, if you guys do decide to go ahead and write this letter tonight and support it, without more time to find out more about this discussion, that I would hope you would try to include some kind of statement in the letter. I know it's not binding in any way, but just, you know, saying that we really hope that our support is sort of contingent upon them keeping access in perpetuity for recreational purposes, hunting purposes. And Grant, I would like to see them say something about, you know, no development on the ridge line, because in terms of the wilderness preservation aspect, they were strictly emphasizing the value of the lowland wilderness, while they say we plenty of preserved, you know, high altitude wilderness. That's not very important to them, but climate change really is. And so you can really see someone who's saying that the value of the ridge line's wilderness isn't really that important, but climate change is, that maybe we need, you know, a ridge line wind protection there to fight climate change providing energy. And, you know, I would rather not see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Justin, Justin Brown?
So I'm here to strongly urge you guys to not write a letter of support. One is to basically touch on what he said about hunting. They're very deceiving in all of that, so that right there, I mean, if they are going to be deceiving to us about that, what else are they going to be honest and forthright with? Secondly, it's a 501(c)(3) company, which means their taxes are, so they don't pay a lot of taxes for this. And they also want to continue to keep land in use, land use, which it won't be in land use, and they want to get tax breaks because of it. So I don't think that they should be able to keep them in use, if they're not going to actually log it and do what the actual definition of land use is. So that's why I hope to strongly urge you to not write the letter of recommendation. And also, they have partnered with these other trusts in the Wild Parity Program, and it is a way for them to create an income, basically. They will be selling parrotting credits to, whether it be the government or anybody that will be producing any parrotting. So they'll be profiting off that as well. So at the end of the day, I don't see how this is of any benefit to the townspeople, considering the president of the company, not only does he live in Massachusetts, he's from Massachusetts, and it seems like there's an awful lot of out-of-state money influencing what goes on in Vermont. Is that good?
Anyone else wish to offer a comment? We have about 10 minutes.
Yeah, Elizabeth Higgins over here.
Okay.
I thought this one here was right on, with, you know, asking about trying to get some easements and covenants in place. And if they're going to talk like, you know, this is a yes or no question, we haven't been asked, or we've just been asked yes or no, but that doesn't mean that we as a town can't be proactive without approaching them and saying, these are our concerns. Will you work with us if you want our support? That's it.
Yes, with the orange, I think the person with the orange hat, I see a hand, but I can't quite see whose body it's connected to.
I, I wanted to stick up a little bit for the, the woman who worked with Bob at least. I saw a girl who wasn't trying to be the sequel to the hunters or any residents of the area. I saw a girl who was trying to bridge the gap, who saw a lot of anger and knows a lot of allies in her organization who are hunters, and just was really worried about that. So she answered quickly and, you know, was on the spot. It wasn't her job to share what was going on. She was just there, really scared about the divide that she saw, and answering the best that she could in that moment. So that's what I wanted to share.
I would say that the rest of that, the company, they should know the information that is very central to what's happening.
Her job is outreach.
Any other comments at all? Matt?
I made comments previously in writing in the last meeting, so we briefly just wanted to make the statement that there's been a lot of opposition from folks interested in hunting. I just want to make the point that the hunting community is not monolithic on this. I'm an avid hunter myself, including on Woodbury Mountain. I always support the project, period.
Yeah, I, clarification, I don't live in Woodbury any longer, I used to live there. I serve on the Kallas Select Board, and we conserve some properties in our town, working through the Vermont Housing Conservation Board. I just wanted to reaffirm what has been said, that if you were to support this project as the suggested outcome, I'd also say you would like to see certain conditions placed on the grant agreement and ultimately in the deed as a contingency to receive the grant. I recommend the Housing Conservation Board, if they were reasonable, requests would go along with that. We certainly did that with the farm, the Armstrong Farm in Kallas. There was, they had their mind, the land trust in this case, had a vision for what they wanted to see, and we strongly disagreed. There was concern about renewable energy on the ridge line here, that's a valid concern. We had the same, the same concern on the Armstrong Farm, because at the time, the land trust was allowing on conserved farms, build out of solar field farms on the fields, and we said, no way. And so we, we got any restrictions, we supported the project, we wanted to see the project go forward like you all, and the land trust actually ended up agreeing with us. And we then attended Select Board Camp in the Housing Conservation Board Day Meet, I don't know if it's monthly or periodically, to go over the grant applications, and you can then speak to the project as well. So you all can direct your select board and ask if they present your, your, hopefully, coalesced position on that. So I, I think you still have a lot of opportunity to provide input, and the board will listen, and you have an opportunity, you folks. Your property is private right now, that will continue to be in private hands, although a private nonprofit, but by having the benefit to you all, by having the Housing Conservation Board put money in there, is that it actually guarantees you access to what is private property otherwise. It's also federal, I would guess that, because almost all the money that goes to the Housing Conservation Board with this, in this regard, is 50% federal match money. So if it's a million bucks, say, there's $500,000 in federal money, we access that federal money for another conservation project, the Vermont Hall in Kalls, and they're all about making sure public access is provided, pretty full bandwidth. I understand you have a concern about nibbling around the edges, not to minimize the concern about, considering some restrictions on hunting. But I would, I would just encourage you to go forward, develop your mind, this is a real opportunity for your town, and I think the board will listen to you in this study.
Thank you. Yes, Jack?
I think this project is going to happen, whether, whether the VHCB supports it or not. The Northeast Wilderness Trust is a big enough organization, they're going to find the money, they're going to buy the property, they're going to become private property just as it is now. The important thing is that when you engage with the Northeast Wilderness Trust, I hope you write a letter of support for the grant, but after that, we need to stay engaged with this trust to raise concerns that all these people have raised. I would suggest you write two letters. One is support of the grant, and another directly to the Northeast Wilderness Trust, asking them to be involved with the town of Woodbury and how they manage that property in the future. As private property owners, they can change their mind at any time, so I think they need to feel, they need to understand how we feel about how that property is used. So write two letters. Encourage the Northeast Wilderness Trust, that maybe a committee could be formed of Woodbury people, to, to continue a dialogue through the years with the trust, so that they know how we feel about how that property should be used. Thank you.
So we have about two or three minutes left for comments. Anyone else? Just Diana.
Sorry, Jack, but you said about it's going to be private property so they can do anything they want? In a trust, Jack and I are on the board for the Northern Wilderness Land, but once those trust documents are there, you can't just do anything they want.
Well, I think there'll, there'll be some leeways within those documents.
They might be the biggest landowner in the Northeast of the United States, right? Or maybe there's bigger land masses of name, I don't know.
They all have the, uh...
Some big chunks, right?
Beautiful.
What's your word, Tim?
What's my word?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like, I like the idea of conserving the land, but I don't like the idea of taxpayer money paying for it, and then you can't really do anything up there. So that's, it's more of a, it seems, it seems kind of pointless, I guess. And it has been awesome that the Meyer's have owned this long. It has been natural wilderness up there. It has, you know, made a good zone for people to hide and ski, hunt. So I guess, like, concern is change. It's the main thing, you know?
There will be a lot of, you know, fair degree of...
Yeah. Well, it sounds like there is some negotiation, and my worry is that somebody buys it and, like, makes a big slice, and we don't have tract of land to hunt. And I don't hunt, but I, I really appreciate the wilderness tract we have. Yeah, but we, we don't hunt, but we work with folks we know and love to hunt on our land. And so, you know, my worry would be, somebody would say, yep, this slice, you can hunt. You know, so I guess, I don't know, I, I really do it too, and I also worry that, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, that we might not, that folks who want to hunt might have limits.
I'm not saying I'm horror or against it, I'm saying it's just, it's kind of odd that it's private, but it's also a tax-exempt organization, but it's a part of the taxpayer-funded. What's the deal?
Oh, what do we actually...
Private to the public is, and if, if, if you want to have a big conservation up there, write in the state of Vermont law and have it be a skate, skate land.
Well, the state of Vermont is, like, not by any...
It's possible to have these money.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and...
You guys could continue this discussion outside, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Last call for a comment. Go ahead.
Just to put a point on my initial statement, you know, everybody wants to see their conserve. I think there's a lot to talk about opportunity, and the opportunity this select board has is an opportunity to advocate your constituency on whole accounts. By writing a letter with these recommendations to put covenants on the property, it would ensure that all of the protected property is carried out by the laws of the state rather than these really arbitrary ideas that this organization has. And you could also put that in the letter to the Meyer's family, make a request to Meyer's family to do it. You know, you could do that with the VHCB and the Meyer family, and, and with the trust, send out three letters to them. But you have a unique opportunity to advocate the concerns of your constituency in this one.
Okay. So I'd like to close the comments, and, and then the three of us can share our thoughts and discussions. Is that okay with everyone at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to go first?
I started once.
Okay.
I'll start again. So, so as, as you heard, I, I appreciate everybody's comments. I mean, I, at this point, with the short time limit, I'm not in favor of sending a less, let me spit this out again, a yes letter. I would be in favor of sending them a letter with our concerns and the things we would like to be included if we were to send a yes letter.
No.
So that's kind of where I'm at, because I, I agree with a lot of the things I've heard tonight, and I think we should send them a letter, but it shouldn't be the yes until we have our concerns aired.
December 7th.
Seems pretty simple. Go back to the turkey and go back to the roads, I think that pretty much sums it up, right?
Right, which may hold up the grant a little bit, but...
How complicated is this have to be?
I mean, that's just my thought, because I've heard a lot of valid things.
There's a lot of private property up there, too.
Yeah, and I've spent, I've spent several hours reading comments, and a lot of people are, they seem pretty close together on this, so I, I would prefer that we just, if we send a letter, the letter just says, here's the concerns that have been shared by the citizens of Woodbury, and for us to send a, a yes, we would need these addressed before we could say yes. That would be my view.
Can we make a list of those concerns right now for that letter before, before the court or correction online?
I'm good with that. Let's hear, I want to hear what you guys have to say, too, but I agree with that.
Do you want to go next, or head on? Okay. So I just want to state upfront that personally, I support the Wilderness Trust, and also from our meeting last time, and from the comments that have come in over the past two weeks, there is significant numbers in town of people that do support this transfer to the Wilderness Trust. We had, I think Chris mentioned, 73 comments. I didn't quite come up with that number, but I came pretty close, and there were basically 57 comments that I had come up with in support of us, the select board writing a letter of support, and there were five comments that recommended that we not support it. And then with a show of hands at the last meeting, there were about 50 or 60 people here, I'm not sure exactly how many, but with a show of hands, there was a pretty clear majority of people that were in support of, of the, of the select board writing a letter of support. So I'm, so I have my personal bias that I just shared, and I also am aware of what the town residents have indicated to me as a select board member, what they would like to see happen. I am aware that, you know, with the restrictions that are placed on hunting, that it does fly against the Agency of Natural Resources and the Fish and Wildlife Department with their, you know, management of, of all the hunting species, whether it's through hunting or trapping. But I also have a memory of the town Conservation Commission doing a Keeping Track training program with Susan Morse, and the key species that we were looking at in these, in this tracking that we did, and the training that we did, were basically bear, fisher, bobcat, the predator species, and at that time, also moose, because when we did that, which was probably 20 years or more, the moose were kind of on the rise. And the reason that Keeping Track had us looking for those species and monitoring sign of them is that they were called the key indicator species, where if those species were present, then they indicated, and this is through science... were present, then they indicated, and this is through science, Fish and Wildlife Biology, that any of the species that they prey on are also in good balance. So I'm, you know, I understand that there are restrictions on, and the restrictions are based only on the predator species that are found. Deer, turkey, partridge, squirrel, rabbit, it's okay to hunt those. And I think the reasoning is, is that, you know, they want this to be a chunk of land that basically just reverts to a kind of wild nature management. And it does fly against what the Agency of Natural Resources, Fish and Wildlife have created throughout the state. But I think in protecting those predators, my thought is that they're also trying to keep a natural balance for all of the other critters that they prey on. So I sort of understand why they have those restrictions on that land. And, you know, there are plenty of other places in Woodbury and around where we can hunt and trap whatever we please. So to me, you know, having something like that in Woodbury, and it's not just Woodbury, it's Woodbury, Elmore, Worcester, and a little chunk of Hardwick. It just seems like a very unique environment and I would love to see that happen. You know, I also hunt, but not a lot. I fish, not a lot. I wish I had more time. When I'm done with the select board, maybe I will. But my main, you know, I spend a lot of time in the woods, mostly in Woodbury, and basically I just like to be out there, walking, sitting, and kind of waiting to see what shows up. That's my enjoyment of being in a forest. And to have an opportunity to have a place like that in my backyard selfishly, that's, again, that's why I'm in favor of that. And I just also want to point out the history that the Meyer family has with Woodbury. The town forest that we had was donated to us by Hugo Meyer, I'll call him the patriarch of the Meyer family. The Woodbury Fund that the town benefits from has also been set up by the Meyer family for the benefit of Woodbury. The post office building was basically restored through donations from the Meyer family. And the Meyer family, which is E B Hyde, you can say the two, pretty much the same thing. It's a large family now and that family, every family member basically controls what happens with the E B Hyde land. I don't think that they, I think that they have done their due diligence in, you know, vetting this with Wilderness Trust. I think they did get kind of impatient with the forest legacy process and the sort of federal government, just kind of turtle pace that they go at. And I know that Ander Meyer has expressed to me that the Meyer family felt that this would be an asset to the town and I agree with them. And I think it's, again, just another step or another instance of the Meyer family trying to gift the town of Woodbury with a very unique setting in Woodbury that would very much distinguish the town and probably be a draw for many people in the state, outside of the state, to come here and walk, hike on that land. People have mentioned the concern about the roads. The roads that go through that property are all town-owned, Class 4 roads at the moment. That's not going to change. There's no way legally that the trust could do that. They have expressed that the snowmobile trail that exists in there will also remain as it is. And I am willing to put into this letter, if we vote to support it, some of the concerns or any of the concerns that people have, you know, have expressed tonight and perhaps we can come up with that, with that list as, just expressing them as our concerns to the Housing and Conservation Board going forward. That's pretty much, pretty much all I had to say on it and I've probably said too much. So I'll hand it on to you, Chris.
So I'm just going to say that we did get a letter from Elmore that their select board did completely support this.
Right, that's the other thing I wanted to say. The town, excuse me, Chris. The town of Elmore, the town of Worcester, and the town of Hardwick, the select board members all voted unanimously to provide a letter of support to the trust for this project. Sorry, Chris, I didn't mean to interrupt, but that was the other thing I was trying to think of.
You can go ahead.
I'm trying to jump off the bridge. Do you do it there?
Probably.
Did Jared, that other town, are doing something?
Justin, Justin, we've had comment. Let's give Chris a chance. Okay, thank you.
Yep, no, I did point to Justin.
Okay, all right, sorry. Justin, thank you.
Thank you.
I hunted this property. I live in a place that is got wilderness management that is also adjacent to this land, so I don't really have an offer for you all because I'm just a select board person. So I'm going to bide my time and I'm going to write comments down. Sound good? So start putting your hands up.
So was that a vote, yes or no?
That is not a vote. None of us are voting.
What are we doing?
Not yet.
We're not voting.
We're going to vote tonight, so.
We are going to vote tonight.
We're going to vote tonight, but we're not voting right now. So I'm taking my time for your comments.
Yeah, pull your mask off.
All right, sorry.
Say it again.
I'll take my time for your comments.
Didn't we just do that?
I got one comment on the Myers family. You just tell about their past history of what they've done for the town, which they have done a lot, probably more than most people. But that was Hugo Myers. That was the first generation. The second generation is a totally different bunch of people. You have two Myers that live in Vermont that support that this land does not go to these people. The rest of the family lives out of state, have outvoted them, and that's how this came about, not the ones that live here. That's absolutely true.
And how do you know that, Dennis?
Through the National Foundation, they've been talking about it.
I'll take the next person who wants to give me a comment.
I would also talk to one of the Myers family here in Vermont. He said the same exact thing.
Can you tell me who that was, Justin?
Michael Myers.
Okay. Next person, please. Sir?
After this agreement is done, then I think there is a win-win here in the end is if the select board chooses to put in a letter that they would like to see those covenants.
I think that's what Chris wants to write down is what the consensus is.
That's what I'm trying to give a sense of, if I may.
I would just say that it looks like the mother probably going to happen if I had a guess, and I would hope that you guys write, you know, requesting the Housing and Conservation Board to, in some way, in return for this grant, try to make sure that we maintain access for under the fishing, that we maintain access for, you know, other recreational opportunities, whatever's going to be skiing, walking, buffalo, and that there's some kind of attempt to ensure that no ridgeline developments such as inductor wind or anything like that happen.
So Mike, can I, I just want to address your concern about the ridgeline. You know, it is a ridgeline, but in the grand scheme of high elevation, it doesn't, it's not high enough. So that ridgeline is part of the lowland forest block that they're talking about. And I didn't hear them mention anything at all about putting any kind of a...
That's right. Should be put in there in one.
Okay.
May I just make a quick comment? Sorry, Mr. Brayden.
I have a question to Michael's statement.
Mr. Brayden.
Meyer and Andrew and I think Steve, well, a while ago had proposed a wind turbine on the Woodbury mountain or Buffalo mountain.
Buffalo.
So the ridge is high enough to generate electricity using wind turbines, whether it's economically feasible is probably more what Michael's talking about, but, you know, FYI, who knows as technology progresses whether or not that would be viable.
And I did mention at our last meeting that the Meyer family was approached by a developer as John just mentioned, and they came and met with different people in town, select board, the Conservation Commission, other people wanting to get their opinion on whether or not the town would welcome wind turbines on the ridgeline. And obviously they were told across the board, no, and the Meyer family returned that no to the developer. So that was the end of that.
The question of the snowmobile, does anybody who snowmobiles up there know whether there are trails that are not part of the Class 4 road already? Because if that's what they use as a Class 4 road, then that's kind of an uninsurance.
There's a vast trail, there's a vast trail that runs through the...
But is it on the road?
It's on the Class 4 road.
And there are parking lots up off the road.
It's part of, it's not a road. Nope.
The water lag that goes from the top of Woodbury downtown Worcester, I believe, is not.
Right, there's some part that's not.
Is that a Class 4 road also?
No, it's not.
I'm not sure a part of it is.
There's a trail. So I think there's a consensus we'd like to maintain.
Yep, all right, so I got that. So vast trail system that's not on Class 4 roads, got it. Someone else, please.
Like another one? Sir? How much do we lose in tax money on that property of the town?
It'll, well, as we talked about at our last meeting, it'll remain the same as it is now in the current use program.
These people are tax exempt?
They are tax exempt and there is a form within the current use terms that allows tax, nonprofit trusts or entities with conserved land is considered another aspect of current use. So it would remain the same as it always has been as far as the current use and the taxes that the trust would pay would be the same as what E B Hyde has paid in the past. Go ahead, Norman.
Yeah, well, it's been mentioned before.
Pull your mask, I can't.
I've mentioned it before, but I've gone to Wilderness Trust, but also the idea of setting up a local advisory committee that maybe with some type of regular basis to get the data, what's going on with land, I think would be a good idea instead of that.
I might watch, we have two more minutes for this. Skip.
I'd just like to make a comment, Dennis, a little bit too. Dennis, you said that you did some research and they could in fact sell carbon credits on the open market.
That was it.
That was Tim.
Is that true? And if it is true, then we should put something in that letter. If we do sell these carbon credits on the open market, the town of Woodbury should be able to access a portion of those companies.
Anyone else? Comments that I can add? We have quite a list, but anything else?
Can I just quickly ask a question? I'm not over there in the...
What's going on?
I know a couple of years ago they were talking about upgrading the road constantly with the Class 4 roads grants and all that stuff, whether or not it would have to be reclassified as a trail or whether the town would have to be upgraded. If that conversation comes back around and the town is forced to put in X amount of dollars to upgrade the road or give it up as a trail, does that mean once it becomes a trail, there's no more access?
I think you missed a conversation about that earlier, Laura. A trail is still a town highway and still town-owned and there would be no change in the use of that road at all.
Can you use motorized vehicles on a trail?
Yes, yes, yes. A lot of people, when they hear the word trail, they think, oh, you can only walk on it. But it's basically another designation of a road where the town is able to give up any type of maintenance obligations to the state. Class 4 road, a town is obliged to fix culverts, fix bridges, and with the Municipal Roads General Permit to solve any erosion problems on hydrologically connected sections of road. So turning it up to a trail that would relieve the town of any maintenance obligations at all, and on the Ho Chi Minh Trail, that would be a good thing. And at the point now, it is still a Class 4 road. It hasn't been reclassified to a trail. Go ahead, Justin.
If it were to be reclassified, would it then be off of this motorized vehicle?
No, no, it would not. It's, the towns cannot, unless they pass an ordinance, on any Class 4 road, you can use ATVs, off-road vehicles, and the same is true for trails. The town would have to create an ordinance with that restriction. It's a state law that ATVs or off-road vehicles can use any Class 4 road in any town in Vermont.
Okay, I'm afraid that we're going to have to cut this off.
Okay.
To the last bit of town business. Is that fair enough?
Yes, yeah.
So now it's time to decide.
Well, my viewpoint is that we should only send a letter asking for what they're going to commit to before we send a yes to anything. I don't see that you're in a strong negotiating point if you say yes and we hope you're going to look at these things. I think we should send them a letter that says...
So it seems like we have some stipulations, gentlemen.
Before they get a yes from me.
Uh-huh. Well, by the time we meet again as a select board, the grant deadline will be...
But that is not a situation recreated, you know what I'm saying? We've been given a short timeframe and I think all of these people have very valid concerns that we need to bring before the buyer, I guess. See what they say, because I mean, I mean, that's just my view of it. And I, because that could put a pause on it for them and get what we want, or they're going to move forward without our approval, which either way...
Well, the alternative is to write a letter of support with the contingencies that Chris has made a list of.
Right, but I'm just not in support of that because it's not negotiating from a position of strength.
Uh-huh. Well, yeah, I don't think we have a whole lot of area to negotiate.
Do you have room for one more comment?
We'll take, we'll take one.
Sure.
I'm just saying that we're here because we want to vote. Two letters, yeah, do it. You're going to miss your grant deadline. You're not going to get your money.
The town doesn't get any money.
We don't get any money.
Yeah, it's not our money. But, right, but if we need this grant money and this is what we're here for, shouldn't we make the vote tonight?
We are going to vote.
We're making a vote.
But not for us?
Nope, no, we're making it, we're just...
We're going to make it right now.
We're chatting about it right now, Miss Carol.
Everybody wants to throw that.
That's why I'm here.
So he's going to pass for a vote. I would like to make a motion that we provide a letter of support to the Northeast Wilderness Trust using and including the contingencies that Chris has just gathered from the folks that are here. That's my, so technically a chair cannot make the motion, but that's the way I would like the motion to be worded.
Yes, yes. Yes, with contingency.
Okay, so Chris, so Chris Codius is going to make a motion to write a letter of support using a specific set of contingencies outlined by the town of Woodbury, present here, in support of this motion. The motion is...
Okay. Do I hear a second? Well, I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion as Chris just read it, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed?
No.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, so the motion is passed and the select board will write a letter of support with the contingencies that Chris has gathered from everyone here tonight. The letter will be sent to the trust and will also be made public. The letter will be sent to the trust and will also be made public. And I guess what I would like to do is with the letter is have us all read it beforehand, before it gets sent. Do you wanna write that letter?
You just volunteered, my friend.
I'm stuck with the letter. Wait, so, so let me just put this out as a select board person. Before you all leave...
Real quick, he just wants to make sure he's got it right here.
Wait, can...
Yeah, we have one person with a hand raised.
Before you guys leave, sorry.
I was just seeking clarification. So the letter will say that your support is contingent upon addressing those concerns.
That is correct. The set of concerns that I have plus the set of concerns that I've written down from these other components of this. So this is, so we have a relatively short deadline to produce this letter of support.
Wait, what did you say?
Days.
Wait, hold on. I was just clarifying that the support is contingent upon addressing the concerns. That was what the motion said.
Is it?
It was support, and then you want them to look at it.
They will be included in the, in the letter of support.
It's not support if, it's support and please look at it.
These will be listed, yes.
So it's not support if, it's support with these contingencies.
Support with these contingencies.
There's no support if these contingencies are, there's no, there's no...
The contingencies will be included in the letter of support.
Can you read the motion back to us, just to clarify? What did he put down? What's the motion say? Do you have it right there? Not to put you on the spot. So it says support with contingencies, not contingent on support.
With specific contingencies. It's okay.
Was it support if these...
Designed with conditional support, that's what I heard.
It's conditional support.
So if they're not willing to meet those contingencies, are you gonna retract your yes?
This, this letter goes to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, not to the trust. Not to the trust. And we will be listing the contingencies that we've gathered tonight, and it will be the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board that will address the contingencies that we've listed with the Northeast Wilderness Trust. Right. And, and I can tell you that they have similar concerns. So some of these things are concerns that the Housing and Conservation Board also have.
Thank you guys for doing that, and it makes me feel better about the whole thing.
So my request to you all, okay, is that as soon as I write this letter, I'll skip to put it out so that it's very clearly available to everyone. We'll give some chance for quick comments, for modifications to that letter, and then, okay, and then the best we can do is you have, we voted as a letter of support. It's two to one. Sorry. It's two to one. So the select board just voted, your select board just voted two to one, and we're gonna write a letter of support of some type, right?
Exactly. That's not what your motion said.
Right, excuse me.
Go ahead, sir.
I think what we need to do here is define contingent. We've got a misunderstanding about the purpose of this letter and the consequence of the letter. So let's just clear it up. What do you mean by contingent?
All right, Michael. Basically, Chris has gathered a list of comments that people made of things that they would like to see addressed by the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board in this letter of support. That's what I understand to be the contingencies. And, you know, Chris, you could read them to people, but, and this would be just, it's, these aren't conditions for our support. These are suggestions that the select board has added to the letter of support for consideration by...
So that's a new letter.
The Housing and Conservation.
Correct.
What's that, Monty?
Change your motion.
We can't. We voted, we're done, okay? These concerns will be in the letter and for the Housing and Conservation Board to consider. Yes.
When I initially asked for clarification, I asked if the support was contingent upon addressing those concerns, and it was a non-agreement, yes.
Well, then I'll let Chris, Chris answer that. That's not what we voted on. We voted on writing a letter, right? Or a letter of support. Our support doesn't actually, can't, can't be contingent on these specific topics.
Why can't, why, then why can't we just go through?
We would have to actually meet with the Conservation Board. We would have to meet with the trust. It would be kind of a long, drawn-out negotiation, I would imagine.
I spoke with Gus Seale today.
Beg your pardon?
I spoke with Gus Seale from VHCV today.
Uh-huh.
And if you guys write that into your letter, that doesn't mean that the VHCV has to strong-arm them, but it gives VHCV leverage to request those covers.
Right, that's correct.
So if you're, if you make your, which was what I understood it to be, if you make your letter conditional upon addressing concerns, then you speak for a point of strength. You advocate for everybody. You still advocate for the project, and you've given VHCV something more vocal than maybe a little control.
That is absolutely true, as far as I understand as well. But it's still a letter of support to move forward with the project.
But the support is contingent, not to the project, but...
It tends, it tends to why I wanted to negotiate first.
This is the difference between saying, I would support this if these conditions are met. That's a huge difference from saying, I would support this and I'd like you to consider these concerns that we have. Like, that's a world of difference. So I'm just wondering, are you guys doing the former or the latter of the two scenarios that I discussed?
My understanding is more on the latter with, the word with as opposed to if.
Did we hear the motion again? Did you read that again? How loud do you hear?
The plus, I didn't get it very well, but the plus side documents, the motion had a letter of support be written with specific contingencies.
So specific contingencies?
With, with specific contingencies.
With.
Okay. Which is the list that we're working off of. And that's what we, that's what we just voted on.
But I was wondering if you would like to see a letter with no contingencies? Great for you.
Oh, you're by yourself?
Don't forget us.
It's good that we have diversity of opinions.
I mean, we did have pretty overwhelming support for the Preserve project from the comments and from the show of hands that we received. So I think for, for, to include these contingencies is kind of a compromise with the folks that do have objections, trying to come to some kind of middle point. So if you wanna browbeat us on the language that we used more... Monty? I'd like to be done with this. Browbeat me directly. Just as soon as you see the letter that I've developed, bring it to me. Okay, that's... I'll take it. I'll take everybody's, everybody's comments. But I have a short timeframe in the letter that we actually write.
Where will it be posted?
It'll be posted on the website. It'll be posted out by the post office in a paper copy inside any place where we post any of the warnings for agendas or, normally posts everywhere.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We really appreciate it.
Your basic no-win situation.
Chris, don't go very far.
You can go fishing.
John, can you wrap it up? We need to get, can you wrap up your discussion with Paul? We need to get that done. Yeah, we're trying to anyway. Okay, all right. So I know there are folks here from the library, and it's kind of about the time scheduled for that. So is it okay if we go to that first, and then we'll bounce back to the town highway and stuff? So, Sarah?
Okay, so the reason I'm here is to ask for an increase in the town corporations in the library. The town currently incorporates $12,000 a year, and we'd like to ask for another $2,000 per year. The last increase was in 2016, and the average librarian wages in Vermont have increased 14% or more since then. And even at that point, our library director was underpaid. I don't know how much everybody knows about the library, but when Brett left, we spent months and months and months trying to hire a new library director with no success. The wages were offering support, someone with a professional. The range of salaries for library directors in other, our surrounding area is anywhere from $20 to $25 per hour, and they, but they are full-time or near full-time. So we're not asking for that kind of support. We're currently paying our director $18 an hour and our staff librarian $16 with no benefits. We'd like to be able to support $19 an hour if possible. And even at the $18 an hour, the only reason that would fit into the current budget is because of some closures because of COVID early on in the year. So we're, we're a little behind, but we'll catch up. The library is open right now 12 hours a week, but the director has duties outside of that 12 hours. And we're working towards seeing how many of those duties we can incorporate into our budget, try to save some, concern. But there's still things, Vermont Department of Libraries meetings, et cetera, that can't be done, lot of work. Also, unable to hold Piner because our major fundraiser for two years. We're hoping to hold it in March of '22, but that's, you know, the way things are right now, we'll kind of nip it on that. We're at the, we're at the end of our Angel Fund money. We have a little bit of that going into the next year's budget, but not the amount we've been using in past years, and then we'll have nothing for the following year. So we are looking at our budget. We have made cuts in some areas. We're getting things to pull in hours to accommodate, but when we do that, we come down to that meeting $2,000 per year now.
Now, do we, do we put that in our budget as a vote it on at the...
It's, it's voted as part of the budget.
Yep. Okay.
Yep.
So our budget, I guess, I have to submit our budget.
To us.
You would say that to $2,000 on that kind of...
It's in the general fund.
I think it's a perfectly reasonable request.
I agree, yeah. It's, it's not...
Paul is gonna comment.
Not that much of an increase that it would require, you know, if you were asking for like $30,000 a year from the $12,000, then we probably would wanna have that as a separate warning on the town meeting agenda for, for the town to vote on, but...
Oh, they have to rule out a town.
So it's, it's... You had a big one, Mary, wouldn't you?
Yes.
It's in the cost of money.
Money.
Monty?
I just had a question. Those 12 hours that you're open, how much traffic was used?
We post the statistics in the meeting minutes every month, and I didn't bring that with me. The posters that come through our office and the library on the central board down here, but, go ahead.
The library, each one, the chart of traffic usage of Class 4s, the library, I can send you the last.
I'm just curious. Does it warrant...
I have thought in my head that it's 200, 300 books, tech, people back, because it's, it's through my mind.
I can say also, two of the days, Monday and Wednesday, the, the library's hours are coordinated with school. The library, the library and the school, it's now the OSUUSD. The new school district and library have a memorandum of understanding. There's collaboration between the library and the schools. The library helps the school administer that after-school program. So some of that time is spent working with the school. And then it's open on Saturdays. And prior to COVID Saturdays, it's been a popular day for gathering.
Yeah, there was a children's hour that was very, very well attended.
We're very much wanting to get back to that, and even if it's, even if we're still masked and not gathering indoors in big groups, unmasked next year, hopefully we'll give it to them outside at least.
I think it's a reasonable request.
I do, too.
It's a reasonable request.
Yeah, so I think...
Yeah, I still gotta, I still gotta get with them, but that covers the price, because I wasn't sure what it meant, had to, had to be in, and that's not stuff, but it'll be made to go on the front of the truck, the length of the hoist that used to lift the plow.
Perfect.
And there's two, two quotes there, one for rubber tires and one for steel drums.
Okay, yeah.
If they're, if they're generous, rubber tire, like, the one that's all, if they're not, steel drums, twenty-five hundred, twenty-eight hundred less or something.
That's the knock-your-teeth-out-while-you-drive-in version?
Yeah, everybody know you're coming down the road.
Yeah, we'll hear them coming, we better go with the rubber tires, because I don't want to hear it.
Yeah, so we'll have to ban that from five o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
I guess that's about it.
When do you ship out?
Sometime next week.
Okay.
Soon as my telephone puts her in.
So I, I had hoped that we might work a little bit on the highway budget tonight, with Brandy out, um, have you had a chance, and Greg's still deer hunting, I assume?
Yeah, well, Greg and I live over pretty good in LA.
Okay, all right.
The biggest, the biggest thing is going to be whether you guys decide that we're going to hold class four open up. If you work on East Long and pour over through to the South Camp Road, you better at least double the budget, because it's going to take about.
For class four roads?
For class fours.
Class four, because it's going to take about seven o'clock, roll the gravel, just to have anything to work with after.
So do you have, uh, an actual budget kind of worked out that, um, that we could look at, um, do you want to try to meet before you leave for Florida?
If you guys want to, yeah.
Okay, because we could, um, obviously, we'd have to, I know, um, I'm just thinking we could warn a special meeting that would be basically to go over the applications for the third full-time road crew member.
When's that, when's that done?
It's Thanksgiving Day is the deadline.
Thanksgiving Day is the deadline.
Yeah, so, and we have one, one application so far that we've received, and, and that may be it, um.
Okay.
But, uh, so we could, we could warn a special meeting for next week, I guess, or, yeah, when, when is the beginning of December?
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
A week, a week from tomorrow, Wednesday?
Okay, so if he's here, I could do next Wednesdays, as soon as I can do it, Monday and Tuesday, I'm busy next week.
Okay.
Can you do next Wednesday, you're going to be gone by then?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm going.
You want to plan for a special, uh, budget meeting that night?
Okay.
Because one thing you guys, I was thinking about, the amount of work that got done this year, as opposed to what's happened in the past year, they didn't haul any sand this year.
No, I couldn't agree with you more.
Well, they didn't need to haul any sand, next year they probably will.
No, but we give up that third guy hauling sand, you're not going to get all the work done.
We're not going to get anything done, so, yeah.
So we're going to need a number for what it's going to cost to do that, because that's the trade-off.
Right, and.
Are we saying six o'clock again, or seven?
We can, what would work, what would be good?
Six is fine.
Okay, is that good for you, Chris?
That's fine.
So that's Wednesday the first at six o'clock.
Okay, so that'll be for?
Or, better idea, we should go to Florida with Chuck.
Yeah.
And meet on his, we should meet on his porch.
Sorry.
He's got a porch, I hear.
This is, do not, I like it right there.
That's way better. Brandy's not here to complain about the expense yet, so.
Right, right.
All right, so Wednesday the first?
Yeah.
Six, six PM, and let's meet in the community room.
All right.
The library, so that's a change, community room.
Because we actually get two weeks off for select board meeting because of the way the calendar works out, so.
So we'll be, uh, different, so part of the meeting will be for interviews of, um.
Oh, for the town highway employee too, whatever we got for people, yeah.
And then to work, to go over the budget, the town highway budget, basically. Um, and hopefully we can get, um, do you have the actual, you know, usually, um, Brandy would have created, um, a town highway budget that has the, you have, okay, you have a copy of, of that, okay, is that, Robin, do you know if, um, there are other copies of the thing that Chuck has in his hand, so the select board can be able to look at it?
I don't know, but I can get a memorandum, like, that.
So we can just have Brandy print one off for us?
Well, if, if we have Brandy available to do that, that's a, that's a question.
See, I have all of the same.
You can get access to it, so we would need that.
If you, if you could get his copies of that, for us to look at.
She always prepared what we had current, and then the next proposed.
So do you have the proposed amounts for fiscal year, um, twenty-three?
Well, pretty much, but.
Okay, um, so we'll go, we'll go over that?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, okay, all right.
But the big one, like, you, and you guys should think about it between now and Wednesday, is if you were to put that grader in, and then class four road.
Yeah.
Right, we'll discuss that at the meeting, yep.
What do you all think about it? Why don't we do that? Uh, we, dude, there was some people come in here, talked about what was done, and the boards said that they would consider it.
Right, there's a bunch of people with camps that have, so we used to grade them, and they're not anymore, and, like, we've got to look at how much of that's, if it wants to be done, and how much we can actually afford to do, because it can get out of hand.
Well, yes, because we just helped resurface one of them.
Yeah.
Caddo Road.
What we think, we.
It's that catch twenty-two, a lot of taxes are paid out there, so they complain, but on the other hand, I'm going to say.
It's, you still have to.
No, I got it, that's what, so we've got to determine how much.
Yeah, you do that, it'll all work.
Yeah, agree.
Well, what we would need to do is, is, what we would need to do is work out, um, a plan so that everybody, you know, if we're going to do this for one road, we should probably consider doing it for others, um, and obviously, we can't do them all in the same year, so we would have a budgeted amount, and it would be good to work out a plan one year this road, one year that road.
Because we don't spend a lot on it right now, so we might get to increase it a little bit, and do a little more than we've been doing, but I don't know that we can do, particularly if we're looking at hauling sand, we're going to have to balance.
Right.
What the cost.
I've been a couple of years on how you.
What's that?
That's a tremendous amount.
Do a lot better without putting your air in.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I kind of like what we've been doing, it's just, if someone complains, we run a load of dirt out there and smooth it out.
Well, the thing that is, is what's been happening is they're taking that ten-wheeler, and they dump it in the pot, then the people have to spread it, and that's what the bitch is about. What we need to do is either get that low pro situated, so it can go out there and spread some of the gravel, or hire somebody like my little trucker, or somebody else's little truck, because, well, to spread it, to put it in place, so.
Because it has made them happy, usually, to just.
Yeah, what you've done, and you get it spread, they'll pack it in, and it's.
Okay.
So it sounds like we need to start, um, start a list.
Chuck, if I have a little thought, Brandy, to make, or, like, anybody, I have a little thought for the class four road, if someone lies out there, they want to fix a road out, you need to class four, a class three road, that's something to do.
They have to, they have to get that. But we're responsible for, bridges, culverts, and ditches.
That's correct. However, it was, it was a town policy to, to at least grade those class four roads, um, especially to the different, um, camp owners, you know, they pay a significant amount of taxes to the town, and, and the argument that I always hear from them is that, you know, what are we getting for our money? So, um, and back when Rick was the road foreman, um, he made it a point to grade pretty much all of those roads, um, during the course of the summer. We, we won't be able to do that, but we, we do budget a certain amount every year for class four roads, and if we could work out, uh, a plan, you know, maybe this road this year, that road next year, that we could present to people when they ask about that, and stay within what we, the budgeted amount that we budget, um, that's, seems like a, kind of a compromise, um.
But you want to stop, say, too, well, if you're ready, out there on, uh, Hattie Road, from Caddo Road, up there, just over a mile and a half.
Right.
So if you start fixing up one class four road, and he decides to get out of bed like him.
I understand.
You've got to get ready.
So my feeling is I tend to take the road commissioner's recommendation on this one.
I agree. Yep.
It's, it's.
I mean, I don't mind putting a load of gravel before.
Right, because it can be Pandora's, but, and that's, that's been working, usually we spread a little gravel and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, good, so we'll have a, we'll warn the meeting, um, and, um, work on the budget, and, and, uh, this is our third full-time road crew hire, um, so I just, uh, wanted to also announce that we did, um, when I got home tonight from work, there was, uh, the letter of agreement, um, was signed by V-Trans for the grant that we, um, received for the, uh, box culvert, bottom of Valley Lake Road here.
Okay, for the design.
For the design, yeah, design only, and when I first saw the price, though, I wonder if that's for both, and I, I got a clarification on that.
Expensive.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, a hundred and.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Buy one, get one free, right?
So there were, there were a couple of, um, uh, designers that were recommended by V-Trans, um, that we should contact, and I guess with our procurement policy with this, I don't know how much it's going to cost for a design, um, but we should probably also just put it out to bid, put it, put together an RFP for that, um, and I have the basic, uh, listing that we got from, uh, when, um, Logan Perrin and Shawna Clifford met with us, um, to look at that, so what, what would be needed, um, in the design process, so we'll try to get that RFP together, uh, for our next, um, select board meeting, um, get that out. Uh, that's all I had to add to, um, to the hot town highway report, um, any, any questions? Any, for, okay, so, um.
Thank you, Chuck.
While you're still here, Chuck, the, another issue that we have on the agenda is the, uh, approval for use of town road sections by the Mountain Tamers Snowmobile Club, um, this is kind of a yearly process that we go through, um, and they're basically accessing different parts of town, uh, class three roads, basically, um, to get to different trails, um, it's never been an issue in the past, they do have a new section of road that they're, um, seeking permission for, and that's for, um, a section of the county road, starting at the Calistown line, um, that would run north, um, to the Logtown Road, um, are you okay with, okay, all right, everything else, you know, it's been, I mean, I have a copy of the two thousand fifteen agreement, um, and everything else is the same, so it's been the same every year, pretty much.
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, requests for road access as written in the letter from the Mountain Tamers Snowmobile Club.
One second, one second. Um, any discussion, I have one question for Chuck as part of this, it's my memory that, um, Steve Gray met with you, and, and I know Chris wanted to be there too, to talk about the road crews' concern on, uh, the Caddo Road, where I guess now they kind of ride on the.
Yeah.
Was there any kind of resolve to that at all?
No, no, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it's still working on it, we're trying to get them to, from where they come out up by Tom Brooks, to work on getting their trail through, by Tom Brooks or something, they want to catch a trail in the corner.
Then out in the road, so.
One, two, three, but, he hasn't called me for a while, so I.
Okay.
Coleman Pracker was putting a ding to that, and he wouldn't let it go across the land, so.
Uh-huh.
As you can imagine.
Right, well, I don't think he owns any of that.
Not mine, he's got some teenagers ones up there.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, um, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the, um, Mountain Tamers Snowmobile Club use of, uh, various sections of town road as stated in the, uh, the, um, agreement that they sent to us, um, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, okay.
So my, a quick question, seeing that was, okay, I'm guessing it would be okay if any, uh, ATV club or several, uh, residents wanted to use some class three roads in the summertime, to hear from one point to, to know if it would be okay?
The, the understanding from, um, that special town meeting that we had a number of years ago was that any town resident can use class three roads at their discretion, um, if there was a Washington County sheriff that wanted to make an issue of it, then that might become a problem, but town residents have use of any class three, class four road that they wish to use.
So what about if it's loved by, to, to just.
Um, that would have to be something that would be, um, voted on by either the select board or, um.
I'd just say bring it to the body.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, this has been apparently, and I asked the same question, because I'm new at this, so forgive me, but when I asked the same question, this has been a group that has come to us for.
All, all years.
Oh, you mean the snowmobile club?
Yep, yeah.
A lot of years, so it was a club that approached this body, and asked for permission on these specific roads, and access these, and so once that was done, there was a mechanism to move it forward.
Okay, that was.
So my, my opinion is that we would treat any club the same way, just bring it before the board.
Yeah, just bring it forward. In order for, um, obviously, there were pretty strong town objection to clubs coming and using class three roads, and the, the select board, the town would actually have to create an ordinance permitting that, that's, that's the problem that happened before, and you were on the select board, if I believe, at that point.
That doesn't, doesn't mean one way or the other, it can't be both ways.
Well, that's my, my concern is.
If you're on the snowmobile, you use a class three road in the wintertime, why can't an ATV use a class three road in the summertime?
Uh, well, ATVs do create a little bit more damage, the road is, is, um, and the Snowmobile Club is basically using small sections of road to get from one snowmobile trail to the other.
That's all that they would want, too, just to get from point A to point B.
So, so it sounds like a reasonable request that could be entertained, right?
I would think so.
I thought in that meeting, way back when, they said that it couldn't, that it was actually legal to say, certain towns could use road, but people from out of town couldn't use that road. We, we all wanted to say, our neighbors could use the roads as they liked, but that was not actually legal.
It's, 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 um, it's not.
That memory that I got.
It's not legal for the town to say that, but it was kind of an understood policy that will just look the other way, we're not going to create an issue over it.
We can't get.
The issue was, uh, you know, having the roads, with the, with that ordinance that was passed, having the roads open to any, anybody, you know, a club from Connecticut coming up with a bunch of trailers and, and, um, you know, um, turning the town roads into a theme park, um, you know, there was definitely a very strong objection to that.
Do you know how these snowmobiles come, from out of state, and use these roads?
Uh, yeah, people do.
I wish we did, I wish we did know, wouldn't it be great to know?
I mean, it's a good point.
But their VAS does have a statewide extension, you know, of trails that are, that are used, and that's not true of, uh, VASA at this point, there are some trails, um, that they use, but, um, it's, uh, it's just a different, it's a different issue, you know, snowmobile clubs have much easier process of using private land. And you were on the select board, if I believe, at that point.
Doesn't mean one way or the other, it can't be both ways.
Well, that's my, my concern is.
Well, on the snowmobile, you use a Class III road in the wintertime, why can't an ATV use a Class III road in the summertime?
Uh, well, ATVs do create a little bit more damage. The road is, and the snowmobile club is basically using small sections of road to get from one snowmobile trail to the other.
That's all that they would want, too, just to get from point A to point B.
So, so it sounds like a reasonable request that could be entertained, right?
I would think so.
I thought in that meeting way back when, they said that it couldn't, that it was actually illegal to say, certain towns could use the road, but people from out of town couldn't use that road. We, we all wanted to say, our neighbors could use the roads as they liked, but that was not actually legal.
It's, 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 it's not.
That memory that I got.
It's not legal for the town to say that, but it was kind of an understood policy that we'll just look the other way, we're not going to create an issue over it. The issue was, you know, having the roads, with that ordinance that was passed, having the roads open to any, anybody, you know, a club from Connecticut coming up with a bunch of trailers and, you know, turning the town roads into a theme park. You know, there was definitely very strong objection to that.
Do you know how these snowmobiles come out of state and use these roads?
Uh, yeah.
I wish we did, I wish we did know. Wouldn't it be great to know?
But their vast does have a statewide extension, you know, of trails that are, that are used. And that's not true of Vassla at this point. There are some trails that they use, but it's, it's just a different, it's a different issue. You know, snowmobile clubs have much easier process of using private land just because there isn't the damage issue with snow on the ground and the ground being frozen that there is in the summertime with ATVs. And I would prefer that ATVs use the town roads as opposed to, to just kind of push away.
Do you want to use a road? They want to get from a Class IV to a Class IV, or from a Class IV to a trailer. They don't want to use the roads. But they got to get there, and you're just, you know, just making all kinds of assumptions.
Well, but what I see around my house are, you know, dirt bikes and ATVs getting, using the town roads to get from one Class IV road to the, to the other. And no one objects to that.
Or say it's not legal.
It's not legal, you're right. So we could, so we could bring it up, it sounds like a great thing. Okay, can we move on? Is that, are we done with that? All right, so let's see here. So the next thing that we need to discuss is our future select board meetings. We're kind of lucky that it's staying warm, but I think we had planned on moving to the community room at the library for our future meetings, at least through the winter until it gets warm enough to return to the town hall. And Chris, were you able to check in with the principal about getting permission to do that?
We have permission.
Okay, all right. So, so we'll plan on our next, actually, the special meeting that we'll have next week.
But that, but that will take.
Okay. I think what we should do probably is let the school know through the principal that the select board would be meeting on the second and fourth Monday of each month. And if there were any special meetings, that we would contact them and get, get permission to, to use that room. So I've been meaning to contact Leif Goldberg, who's the director at the moment of the Hardwick Community Television, Jim, who's filming tonight, is a board member, about being able to provide us with remote access as they did here in the town hall last summer fall, where basically the, the meetings would be streamed live so that people could access the meeting remotely. And then I thought what we could try doing is, is using the town's Zoom account to, and I'm not quite sure how this will work, but I'm trying to figure it out and maybe I will talk to our two skips.
Need a screen that's big enough to see everybody, camera shining on us, it's tough to do.
It would, yeah.
I just did one in Barry last week, it was tough.
I think it would probably be a poor second where there's basically a laptop set up and we can kind of see who's accessing the, the meeting through the laptop and.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just not technical, so.
No, well, I don't think, I'm not either, that much, but every now and then I'm forced to learn some of that stuff. I was at a, a meeting earlier this fall where there was a person from away that was a part of the meeting, and they were able to be at the meeting through a laptop, which was connected to an app, and somehow they could hear any questions that the people at the meeting, the in-person meeting, asked, and they were able to answer those questions. And somehow they could hear, and I'm going to try to find out how that was done. And then the app allowed people in the audience to hear their response, so.
Yes, we had, for mutual aid meeting, we had it in Barry's emergency services building, they have a setup for it, it's got a center mic and the whole.
Yeah.
And if you don't have that, it's really hard to do.
Right, okay.
Is the two days going out of the question?
Uh, I didn't ask you about that, but Monty, I'm with. I think that it's, it's, it's hard to get access to that space because.
The school, the new district leases that space.
Yeah, but I'll ask.
Good question.
Thank you. I think they're probably, you know, with the COVID.
I'd be happy to keep meeting in here.
COVID numbers as they are, there's probably a whole kind of cleaning routine that needs to happen after.
It's, it's just because kids are going to go back in there. But fair question, I'll ask.
And at some, you know, I think we should, again, continue to be aware of what's happening with the pandemic and, you know, revisit from time to time, especially if we do get some type of state guidelines on precautions. You know, at this point, you know, people who feel they want to wear a mask are and people who feel that they don't want to or don't need to are not, and it's not an issue. At this point, I do worry, in the community room, as you mentioned, it will be a smaller space. I know my level of concern will increase a little bit. And if things continue to get worse, we probably should kind of revisit what we might want to put in place for precautions. But we'll, we'll see what happens. So, any, any thoughts from other select board members on, or from people that are here?
I'm okay with meeting up there.
Okay.
I just can't help you with the technology part.
Right, I'll do my best.
Okay.
If it comes to that, we have to stay in a bigger room, because I can't help.
When Chris is asking about using the gym for the meeting, should he just put a field around there and we're going to be able to use it for town? We think if we have a.
We probably should, I'm just going to ask to, ask to the principal directly and see about.
You better ask about town meeting, too, because.
Yeah, we should start, I'll start that process.
Start a dialogue about town meeting.
We might be meeting outdoors in the parking lot at this point, where you.
Can't you see, we're all down in the alley.
Be a damn short meeting if it's cold out.
We have done that in the past, yes, miss? I mean, that's where we had town meeting years ago. So I'll, I'll start that out here. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer.
Anything else about the select board meetings? And this, you know, kind of goes across the board for other town committee, commission meetings. That'll probably be our go-to space through, through the heart of the winter here, anyway.
It just gets wet.
It's.
The fire department's been meeting in here for 10 years and everybody thinks that's a good idea, so we could.
Yep. It's, it's.
Wear your boots, wear it.
Put a sweater, put a sweater on.
Wear, wear your boots.
We have probably would.
We'll have a little rain shower. Keep your comments, where are you? I'm good with whatever you guys decide.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Well, it's for us to decide, we'll figure it out.
I'm okay with staying here.
Uh-huh. Well, unless we warn it differently, just, just so that we have this on the record, for next Wednesday, which is coming up pretty quick, we're going to have this in the community room. That's Wednesday, the first, at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see 60 people showing up for the.
So that's the plan.
They really love it.
That's the plan for now. Everybody clear on that?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Right. And then if, and if we make some changes, we'll make sure we warn those. But everybody's clear on that one.
And technically, the.
Everybody's clear on that one.
The interview should be an executive session.
Yeah, they will, you'd have to warn the executive session in that meeting, too.
Yep. The highway budget, not.
Not. So we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, so we could either start out an executive session and then come out and do the budget.
I need some guidance on that.
Which would you prefer to do first?
Probably we should.
Probably do the budget first.
Probably do the budget first, so people don't have to hang around.
Right, yeah, okay.
And we go an executive session with the interviews.
So budget at six, close off the executive session, and soon as the budget's done.
Executive session after that.
There you go. So how much time do we want to give to the budget? As much time as it takes?
Yeah, it just takes whatever it takes, hopefully an hour or less, but.
Right, it's not what they want.
Chuck says he's got it all polished up, so.
It ain't, it ain't a lot of big changes, it's not what they want.
So are we, are we set with that, then, to move on?
Yep.
So on the updates and follow-ups and other business, oh, I noticed I missed an S on that, but that's okay. So I wanted to just address the town plan, but we have our chair here. So could you just give us an update on the town plan, Skip?
So we had a meeting on the 4th of 15th, began at 6:00. Some folks sometimes would be a third at 10:00 or 11:00.
Woo, there's hardcore.
So the reason why we had it was so long is that we had many comments and different that we didn't consider. So we definitely needed comments for catalog, and we were prepared for, um, comparing town where, which, how we responded to that. Whether it's included in the plan or whether it's just a possibility of consideration. So I'll draft the town plan, it's being edited right now by the regional planning. They hope to get it to us by Wednesday, so it's pretty aggressive timing schedule, but even if it's the following, it's going to be okay, I just wanted to be rough. As soon as I get that, I'll distribute it to the other planning commissions and give them a week to look it over. And then we'll hold a special meeting, looking at the calendar. Probably the week of the 6th or the 7th, somewhere in that time, to adopt a resolution to present the plan to the select board. Once the select board gets it, and I'm hoping, I'm sure, December 13th meeting for the announcement, to explain the town plan. And the select board requirements are established to move the plan along to its approval. And I can help you with that, I have just a few guys, five pages checked this, which you have to go over.
Only five pages?
That's all.
That's great.
Double straight.
At the end, do we approve this town plan or do the voters vote on it?
Well, you have two options.
Okay.
There are options, we have a select board that approved it and approved, and then send it along to the regional planning commission, and then send it along to the town and municipal community board. Absolutely, we do that as a session. We have the option to vote in special, uh, Australian ballot.
So it would have to be Australian ballot?
Yes.
But you'll send us the stuff, I'll read it. I've got, I was reading mountain stuff recently, so I'll get the town plan stuff next.
Town plan's only 114 days, so.
Can't wait.
My, it's, it's the culmination of a two-year project, and we go to the long term. So that is, nutshell, is the, uh, the, the.
Thanks, Skip.
Thank you, Skip.
And I just have a question, a question, a letter that you offered you, uh, someone outside. What can I expect?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
You'll be up all night right now.
You guys have a post?
Me have a couple of comments on it.
Uh, I'm going to pass it around to this group and then within, I mean, you're going to see it within 24, 36 hours.
Yeah.
I mean, that's our only option to get this thing off, basically.
So we might want to consider that it's the Thanksgiving holiday, and I don't know how much. I have two very full workdays ahead of me, Tuesday and Wednesday, and then it is Thanksgiving.
I have to go to Berlin, I have to now.
Maybe early next week, we could, I mean, you, you could do it whenever you, whenever you can. And if you can get it done, I would have time to, to, to give a read of it, but.
Uh, so Skip, it sounds like you're going to have to wait a week. Give about, be a, about a week.
Okay.
Maybe early, early next week.
So it's not a rush, it's a week.
All right, I think we have until December 7th.
We have until the 7th, but that's going to require some iterations before it's really out to.
You might encounter diversity of opinion.
Which is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I also put the ARPA committee on the updates, and I was hoping that Brandy could kind of fill us in on that. I know they met last week, maybe it was a week before.
Two weeks, it was two weeks ago.
November 11th, I think, is when they met, Veterans Day. So, you know, it's.
We could put that on the agenda again next time, and see if.
Yeah, I was, I was counting on Brandy to kind of fill us in on that, on what happened. It was, to me, I think I, I saw the agenda, it was posted out here, and it looked like it was just kind of a first get-together, kind of choose a chair and a secretary, you know, kind of just get things organized and, and, and then, you know, start to work at some point down the road, so, so we'll.
So you said how long the votes were going to happen?
I would, I would, uh.
I think reaching out to Brandy sounds really great.
Yeah, I mean, I, I assume that they did. Actually, Justin is on the ARPA committee, so can you fill us in?
I forgot about that.
You answered your own question.
So it sounds like we could have other members.
We, we, well, no, that's not what I was referring to, uh, as far as what happened.
Oh.
You answered your own question.
So you mostly just organize?
Right, that's what it was, did everybody.
Okay, yeah. So.
I'll return to Brandy.
So no additional members, Justin?
No additional members? No additional?
That would be up to the chairman, I'd have to talk to the chairman.
Yeah.
And the chairman is?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, so, talk to Brandy. Okay. All right, so that's pretty much it on the agenda. Any, any questions for the select board?
Do you renew generator contract?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, okay.
I actually took notes and looked at them, not like my shopping list.
So we, we received today the contract for.
You guys are all set, I'm all booked.
See you next week.
I'll see you in the next week.
I'm going to be wishing really hard not to snow before you get to Florida.
So this, this is basically, so we have the choice in this contract of a, the program one is a complete annual service, so it will be a one-time maintenance service on the generator. And then we also have a choice of two visits a year. So the, the complete annual service would be $959 a year or $911 if prepaid by December 3rd, 2021. And then the two visits a year would be complete annual service, operational checkout service analysis, whatever that means. And I guess they have details in the cover letter for that. So that would be $1,554 or $1,476 if prepaid by December 3rd.
We did one, one, one year last year, because we're checking it, where the fire department checkers are checking it every month.
Every month, yeah.
Right.
And so the question is whether it's yearly or quarterly.
Do you remember what we did?
I think what we did is that we, it was the cheaper program.
The one year.
And then we got into trouble with the generator, so we decided.
We thought that clearly it made more sense, even though you guys were checking it often.
To do it two times.
Two times.
Okay, that's fine, because we're doing a monthly oil and antifreeze check.
Yeah, okay.
Because that was the.
This builds on that.
Okay.
Right?
So let's do the two-year, twice a year.
I think paying a little bit, a little bit more would be.
So that we know it works, because we're not doing a functional test.
Right, you guys are basically just checking fluids.
Checking fluids.
And then I remember when we met with Brookfield Service after the failure of the generator, they were going to do an assessment of the, you know, we were talking or at least had begun discussing whether the generator actually needed to be upgraded, to be larger, they were going to do some kind of draw test.
I think we were okay because of the, the amp is still okay and the hours were really low on it.
Right.
So I think, Tyler, we left it, right? Do you remember that conversation? It was, I think we left, we were okay.
It was still.
It was either that or you can bring it to Meyer Hall.
Yes, I said, if it's junk, you better throw it in my car, that's how bad it is. So I think we're okay.
Yeah, thanks.
And so we, they said that it was old, but if it was.
But functioning.
But functioning, and if it was watched over as the fire department is doing, that it should be fine. The question was whether, you know, we wanted to do kind of a draw test to see if in the future we might want to upgrade the generator so that it could service both the fire station, the town hall, and the school.
We were planning, so, so it's easy, I, I would think it's a smart decision to have that. Planning, so, so it's easy. I, I would think it's a, a smart decision to have them come and do an amp test on it to see what's on it now. Because I know in the long-term plans, this building is where they're going to bring the school kids in an emergency.
Exactly.
This building is not connected to the generator right now. All we've got to do is run a wire between these two buildings and put a transfer switch, and it could be connected.
So let's do a draw.
And there's very, very low current drive. There's no water heat. There's no major current drop here.
Let's see what the problem is on it.
So I think if we, I think I would have them do that and just see where we're at. I think it's a fifteen or twenty, twenty-five KW.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah. So, um, what I'm hearing is that we will, um, go with the two visits a year, uh, for fifteen hundred, actually, for fourteen seventy-six.
And I'll make that as a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alright. Um, any more discussion on that at all? Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And, um, yeah, so we'll, um, we'll let Brandy know, um, and if we can pay it by December third, we'll, we'll save a few bucks. Yeah. Okay. So I will, Robin, I'll return this to you, um, when we're done.
You had Winuski Basin water.
Yeah, so this is a...
Not that I want to stay, but we might as well take care of whatever it is.
So this is a, um, so basically, I'll just read the, the letterhead. The Center for our Regional Planning Commission has designated the clean water service provider, um, for the Winuski River Basin, um, and they're conducting outreach efforts to municipalities. They're looking for two candidates who wish to represent the municipalities on the Basin Water Quality Council. And there are forty-nine municipalities in the Winuski Basin, and they're basically looking for two candidates to represent the municipalities, um, with, on this council. So, and they're encouraging us to share the application form widely with our municipality to those who are interested. So, and then, um, the purpose of the, uh, council is to establish policy and prioritize and select clean water projects for funding to achieve pollution reduction. So they're looking for members, uh, these two representatives who have a knowledge of clean water topics are an interesting in prioritizing and selecting clean water projects for funding, an interest in participating in the basin plan, planning process, and the ability to attend the quarterly meetings. So I don't have any idea of anybody in town that, that would, um, be qualified or, or interested. I don't know, Chris, with your geology work, if you know of anyone at all that, um, either in town or, it doesn't have to be necessarily our town, um, our town resident, you know, if you know of someone in another town, um, who might be, you know, familiar with, um, or active in any kind of, um, town, uh, official capacity, um, who has a knowledge of clean water topics, um, if you could think of any...
I know people who actually work on the, on, on the, doing the work on the water, so I will do my best. So, give this one to me for a minute.
Alright. So this will basically be, um, recommending a person, I, yeah. Right.
So wearing everybody out.
Okay. Yeah, so these exciting, exciting...
We're so exciting, people just keep leaving.
Do you mind if I, if I reach out to some people and then send to you? Is that fair enough?
Okay. Or you could send it directly to the Regional Planning Commission. That's kind of what, there's a little form here that they have provided.
What would you rather? Would you rather know about these people or not know about them?
I personally, I think this, uh, work has to be known about.
Okay, fair enough. So I might take it out of your hands a bit.
Okay.
Alright.
Gladly given, right?
Holy moly. I can't believe I've just said yes to that.
You're going to learn.
Four of them, and quick. So that's everything on our list. Um, let's see, yeah. And do I hear a motion?
Motion to Jared.
Jared. Do I hear a second?
Second!
Any discussion? Alright, here and done. Um, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye. We need a pub in this town now. Have a good one, everybody.